Calling the Newcastle City Council, regular council meeting on Monday, October 21st, 2024 to order. Please rise for the indication in the following regions.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the beautiful day that you gave us. We ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and your insights, and we welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussion and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved in our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. I need to make one amendment under Citizens Business Federal Number One, Ben's Brockett's.
Madam Mayor, I want that we approve the amendment agenda.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and executive session of Monday, October 7th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Citizens Business Federal Number One, Attorney with Ben's Brockett's.
Thanks for getting me in so quick. I appreciate that. Ben's Brockett's would like to request where we could put in a storage container similar, if you like, with an ice skating rink people have on the skate park, if we'd be able to do that at the backyard park. We've got the rent money where we'd be able to purchase one of those cargo trailers, whatever you call them, 20-foot cargo trailer, and we'd like to be able to put it with, in the backyard park area, so we can get our tools and not have to have them stored at any individual's house. Just give it a little bit more of a central location. Did ask great at one point, so yeah. And we'd work with you on a specific location, any drainage that needs to be done beforehand on that far side, or how that needs to be done.
It's an acceptable.
So would it be like on the sides or in the front, or?
Mr. Needy and I can get together. We can decide where to put it, but we'll put it far enough out of the way that we shouldn't have to move it to any more times during the construction phase, is what we're looking at doing.
And discreet, so it's discreet too. I hope that would be the front window of what we're doing, and hopefully blended in too.
You don't want to build an ice rink.
No, no. It's... And it honestly probably wouldn't be brought in until before a few months yet anyway, so.
And would we have some kind of a waiver of liability if anything were to happen, or it was broken into, or?
Yeah, we would assume the risk of it. Just I'm sure that's the same as what you have with the ball fields and the ice skate club.
Hi, Lucy.
Won't be anything later that you might need power or something, or is this just a temporary piece then, what you're building?
I mean, in my mind, no, it wouldn't need power. We don't want power for it or any utility for it. It would just be for storage. Put a big lock on it, keep our tools in there, equipment in there, keep it out of the way of any individual that we're not bothering. Somebody go get tools out of somebody's garage at the club owns.
Don't see any issue with it. Do it. So make a motion that let Ben's Brockett put in a storage container at the backyard park to store their tools with him.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Good.
Thank you, City Council. And we have our last workday for this year, probably. It'll be Jan... It's Saturday at 9:00, and everybody's welcome, as usual. And hopefully we can get the bump track part finished up and be good to go for the week. And again, thank you for your support.
All right, thank you. We have no business under citizens in writing. Moving on to old business. We do have a certificate of recognition for Pam Anderson. We will get this mailed out to her, but it's in recognition of her work to unify our community with the updates to her apartment building and her incentive. Old business number two is garbage truck.
Madam Mayor, I did speak with Mr. Tommy O'Dea. He does not see a problem with moving forward with the ordering bid, as long as we have an MOA with DEQ and a resolution to put in for the funds for the garbage truck. If it's a 75-25 split, we would have to pay $100,000 out of the estimated $400,000 truck. We would move forward with the application and those kind of items after the MOA, I believe. I gave those to Kirk Caggerty earlier today, the resolution and the MOA.
And you said last time that our last meeting that the $100,000 is not an issue for our city. Do you have that money?
We should have enough, yes. But it is hard to beat a $400,000 truck and only have to pay $100,000 for it, so. Okay, so then you make a motion then for to...
For me to sign.
To assign the resolution and rate?
Yes, I agree.
Yes, both of them.
The MOA for the solidly cease and transfer.
Right, right.
And that is the DEQ account that will be funding the garbage truck. Since we are not building a transfer station, and we're only ceasing taking garbage, we... There is money available for us for the transfer, in lieu of a transfer station that can assist us with real equipment such as a garbage truck. That is a 75-25 split.
So what would be the resolution number for?
Eight, eight dash twenty twenty-four.
So I'd make a motion that we would authorize the mayor then to sign the MOA with the DEQ and then a resolution authorizing submission of the application of land and water conservation grant, application for the garbage truck.
Second, please.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thanks for checking into that, because I just didn't want to lose out on the potential of not having gotten our grant if we had just decided to look at it.
They said if it would be within the next six months, then we needed to wait. But where the truck will not be here for 380 days after we get all the paperwork done, the notice of award, all that stuff handled, we're looking at over a year before using the truck, so.
I just didn't want to tie our hands up.
Yep.
If we would have done that earlier enough, had the opportunity to potentially get a grant, and we're not paying $400,000 for the $100,000.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
And along with that, Madam Mayor, I would recommend awarding the bid to Peterbilt, Wyoming with LaBride, with the LaBride Full Eject Side Load Refuse Body for $403,792.
How much you get? So make a motion that we would accept the bid from Peterbilt for the LaBride garbage truck for $403,792.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Moving on to Resolution Number Seven, Series 2024. Oh, I'm sorry. Going back to Number Three, Wyoming Community Gas Project Distribution. So our last meeting, we talked about the community project designation for Wyoming Community Gas. The amount was for $6,006.61. And everybody was to kind of think of a community project. And I think one that was brought up was the Veterans Memorial. And I don't know if anybody has any word.
I just had a person approach me, or she sent me a text, Jennifer Smith, on the All School Reunion.
Not one program?
It's the All School Reunion is what she was wanting it to go. And I don't know.
So how did we describe the money?
It's a... Okay, so every year, the Wyoming Community Gas makes a distribution of earnings to a number of communities. This year, our board of directors would like you to designate the projects your city or town wants the money used for before we issue the check. This will give Wyoming Community Gas more direct exposure to the citizens in each community. So it's for projects in our city or town. So the project is more like the memorial. I think collections for the All School Reunion would be taken another way.
I just told her I'd bring it up.
Yeah. And it was, we got several projects that have been for the community.
And I know we've put this one to the Dow Park restroom across the way here.
And like, what did that do?
I think they can try and put something towards the Veterans Park, or be a temper project to benefit the community also. And it could be that we look at that as splitting that in half for the still in the Dow Park restroom we have to do.
Maybe $3,003,000 and some change to Veterans Memorial?
I think that would be a good project, too, that all helps support.
I agree with them. And the other three?
I agree with that. They would put to Memorial and the other half to Dow Park. That would work well.
Long as it's private.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion on that?
So moved. Everything he said. So make a motion that we assign the Wyoming Community Gas Project Distribution money, half of the money go to the Veterans Memorial Project, and the other half of the money go to Dow Park restroom project.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the City Council, School Board, or County Commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
So now moving on to new business, Resolution Number Seven, Series 2024, Application for Land and Water Conservation. So Resolution Number Seven, Series 2024 is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application. Whereas the city of Newcastle has identified the need for replacing an existing restroom with a precast or cast-in-place concrete restroom, and has established a project called Newcastle Doll Park Number Four. And whereas the public benefit of this project will be to make a needed replacement of a restroom facility for the benefit of the outdoor recreation in the park. And whereas the Land and Water Conservation Fund Administrator, Administrator by the Wyoming Department of State Parks and Natural Resources is a federal grant program designed to assist in the development and order of, excuse me, French system, of public outdoor recreation lands and facilities. And whereas the city of Newcastle will encumber 100% of the grant requesting, requesting funding for the 120 million? Thousand, sorry. With the federal funds requested and the cash matched for this purpose. And whereas funding from the general fund is available as cash matched for the purpose. And whereas the city of Newcastle designates the Doll Park will only be used for outdoor recreation and...
To.
Now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the city of Newcastle, Wyoming, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute the city clerk to attest a grant applications in Land and Water Conservation Fund administered by the Wyoming Department of State Parks and Natural Resources and in the amount of up to 60,000 federal funds for the Dow Park Number Four project.
And we just call for a vote, because that is the resolution. Be it resolved. I vote yea. So make a motion that we pass Resolution Number Seven, Series 2024.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Pass and approve and adopt this new first way of the board. Okay, committee reports. Police committee?
Okay, and here, my police committee last week discussed a few things with the chief in that. And I can see how the police department's doing and catch up on a few things that need to be taken care of. One of the items that we discussed was the dog were not able to find a sale for the, for the dog. So we discussed as a group that we were basically going to keep the dog, because there was a need for the dog yet within the community and the department. And basically, as Kaminsky, I believe, is the officer that would be the handler for the, for the dog. Also, the other topic on there was the CSO position with officers and everything. It's their task and everything within the community they're not able to do, the CSO community, and making sure that the ordinances and everything are kept up with. So talking this over with the chief, and we felt that it was best that this position gets filled back in, so that this kind of relieves some of the pressure off of the officers trying to do any of the ordinance, making sure that everything is being taken care of ordinance-wise within the city. So we suggested to them to look to find someone to fill that position. Does anyone leave anything else? I'll chief.
I don't think so. No, that was a move to cover.
Anything from you? I think that's it, Greg. Yeah. That's all we had.
So we're beginning to advertise for that dog?
I think the direction that the committee talked to the chief was to look for, trying to advertise to that position to be fulfilled.
Do we need a motion for that?
Do we need a wage, top of that?
I don't remember hearing anything here, needing a wage or...
My proposed wage was $18 an hour.
But yeah, if it's going to be, if there's going to be funds used to advertise for it.
Make a motion that we have the chief make... Advertise, or does that, do you have to see? Somebody, somebody advertise for a position for the CSO with a starting wage of $80.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Any other questions for the police committee? Moving on to department head reports, City Clerk Travers, Casey Hattie.
All I have to report is that we are working on audit, and our new hire, Rochelle McCross, started on last Monday, and things are going very well.
What is her name again?
Rochelle.
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 McCross.
Moving on to Public Works Supervisor, Greg Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I am on the Public Works Report for Projects. Happy to report in the 107th Avenue, and this will be removed from the list.
Yay! It looks nice, Greg.
Yep, turned out very well. So the next item I have, the bike path to Morrison Road. The application period is closed for the 2025 construction season. We could apply for funding for this for the 2026 construction season. We would get the information, we received an email with the information from YDI in March. So we'll have to make a decision before then if we want to, if we want to put in a statement of intent to move forward with this project. As I said, the cost to the city out of the general fund would be $50,851 to build a $958,000 cycle. This is through the Transportation Alternatives Program. This money cannot be used for streets. It's only meant for alternative transportation projects. The next item, the lead copper rule revisions. We have submitted the inventory to EPA. With the help of the flyers that we received and some other information, we're able to take the number of fight, the number of unknown service line integrity from 577 to 273. We're still working on it. We actually knocked a couple more off yesterday, or today, actually, today and Friday. We'll begin sending out these letters to the unknown integrity of the water service line October 28th, just so everybody is aware. We do have to have these all up and done, sent to the customers by November 16th. Next item, the rate analysis. We finished the two town halls, and I would like to see what the council's pleasure would be on this. It's not a fun one, I know. It's not something I wanted to be, but my recent events with work street breaking again, I'm kind of getting my rope as far as what to do later than just start replacing the pipe ourselves, which we can't afford that either, so.
We have the rate analysis back, and basically it outlined what we need to project for customer services for each one. So in order to pay for a lot of these infrastructure pieces that need done, I don't see any other choice that we have to do, move with this. We completed the rate analysis to see, because we put in height for the rates when we first looked at it, to try to cover. Well, we got some feedback from other constituents within the community that didn't like the idea of being tight rate. We do this in small increments instead of getting to every 10 years and kind of doing big increments. It's not going to be quite as noticeable, the things that we're having to cover on this on an annual basis, and things are not going to get any cheaper.
You're absolutely right.
I agree.
Between now and, and when we put in the original application for the 2025 maintenance project, estimated cost ran up $300,000 since January. So when we first looked at replacing the tank after the sandblasting recode in 2014, am I correct, Donnie? I believe it was 2014. The cost to replace that tank at that time was $3 million. Now it's estimated to be $9 million.
And as bad as that tank is, it should have been replaced at the time when we were in.
I agree. It was in bad shape, and it's not going to get any better.
So if we need a motion, that I would motion that we would follow the rate analysis that Carl Brown had completed for, for the city utilities, and place the rates on what our customer are going to be having to pay for water, sewer, and garbage.
Would please the council, maybe I go visit with the contract customers first, to visit with them, and let them know what's going on, because I didn't see a lot of them, a lot of those folks at the, at the town halls. Wyoming Divine Company, Wyoming Under Conservation Camp, the districts. Camp, the districts.
I think we need to do that, because they use a lot of money. And I just, I just worry about our citizens on a fixed income.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
I just worry about our citizens on a fixed income.
I do too, but I don't know what else we can do. I mean, I truly don't. I doubt it, we, it's like honest that, you know, we raised big time and...
I just know that we would've just done it a little bit at the time when we first started. We wouldn't be where we're at today, we would've just thrown it all away.
But we didn't. So now we have to fix, I mean, we need to, we can't save, we should've.
I know.
So...
It's just not fair.
No, I agree. I agree.
Most of the ones that, like refinery, um, we've talked about that several times here in some of our meetings, um, some of the districts, um, ones that we supply up north, they, they understand it's coming, that I've talked to, um, it's already been passed on, or I've already understood on a couple of them, it's already been passed on to their, their customers who they knew rate increase was coming on our side. So I don't know, I guess I'm with what additional ones.
What kind of feedback did you get on the second town hall? Same...
They had eight people show up, so they primarily wanted to know what their new bill would be. Um, two of them were fixed income people that, that spoke, and I visited, one of them half communityed, so.
Were they kind of, I mean, do they understand, do you think?
Yeah, they have to have an understanding that, that we have...
We have to do, we have to do something.
A broken down system that's only gonna get worse. Um, they're just worried about being able to pay for it. Once I explained to the one gentleman what, what it would be, and I told him to get a hold of myself or Clerk Caggerty, and we could figure out the bill, almost a penny of, of what it's, what it was going to be. He hasn't contacted me yet, but I'm still waiting to hear. And that goes for everybody. I mean, if they wanna know what it is, we can, we can calculate it for them.
Now, I know, um, you mentioned to me that, uh, LEAP gets a certain percentage, correct? Or that's why, what percentage?
So the interesting thing about LEAP, the only time they paid for water and sewer bills was during COVID. That program ended in twenty twenty-two as far as paying for water and sewer. The only thing LEAP helps anybody with is energy and gas.
Can't people find any...
There's way I'll help, uh, ministerial association, that's about all.
We'll have a motion on the floor.
Your second?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a further discussion.
So now are we voting, or are you gonna talk to more people before we actually say yeah?
That's up to the council.
There is a motion, so we have to either turn it down...
I'm just, I'm kind of asking before I say yes.
So we can, you know, turn down this motion and let him speak with the refinery and honor camp and...
If that's what you're the council, that's up to, that's up to all of you.
I don't know whether it would do any good or anything, but we've gotta do it.
Yes, the lady said, you know, we've addressed this even last year, and we liked it, and then we ended up backing off that one. Um, we started looking in our budgets to see what that was gonna increase in our budgets, so we had to start planning on that. So it's already been discussed in the last couple of years, what that increase was gonna be. And I know several people up north that, um, that we've talked about, and they said they've already seen an increase, it was already passed on, and no one, this is coming.
I mean, there's more than just water that they're paying for too. I mean, they're getting a whole bunch of stuff with this.
Well, I know that the honor camp's probably on a budget, and they probably have their budget set, so we probably need to...
I can visit with them, meet with the motion. I mean, that's another thing, I can set up a meeting with them.
So when does this actually go into effect? Right when we vote?
Is this going to be...
You know, not watered by y'all.
I do too, but, you know, we've seen it over the years, even the previous councils before us have not taken the stance of what we've had to pay to fix things. Obviously, it was cheaper to fix things back then than what we're facing right now.
Well, even Don Thorson...
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, even Don Thorson made a comment that there was no way to predict where we would be at today, so obviously they couldn't, um, do what they needed to do at that time for us to be where we're at today.
Yeah, even over the past several years of the public works crew going in and patching things, day in and day out, how many times throughout the year, not realizing, hey, we gotta replace a whole section of pipe on Seventh Avenue, um, Fifth Avenue on down. Um, First Avenue is a perfect example, we had to go for emergency funds for, to fix. When we're breaking water lines and flooding people's property, you know, are we gonna say, how long am I gonna sit here and say, well, it's not my problem? Or are we gonna try to come up with something to fix it, so we're not putting these people out?
Well, what we need to do too is prepare the future councils, um, making sure that they're doing what's needed.
What's needed.
Every year, so we're not in the same predicament years to years. So we need to make sure that the right increases are done, so they're not getting a big slap. I mean, we're getting a slap too, but that we're not doing this again.
And I agree with Carl's statement, uh, annual revisit this thing annually, not once every couple, three years, or five years. Do it, do it December or January prior to budget. So we understand where we need to be at that point in time, because the prices keep increasing. Nothing's getting cheaper. We're not seeing, I mean, it's nothing to see fifty percent increase in, in a project per year, but we don't do it. So annual, annual, annual revisit this thing annually is, is probably the key thing to get in stuff. The other part is the need to plan. Uh, the asset management plan that we're developing includes fiscal sustainability plan inside of it that will allow the future councils in the next twenty, thirty years to see what they, where they need to be because of what we did now. Um, start moving those priorities down as we're gonna fix them, I guess.
Yeah, the, the other thing, I just wanna make a mention is, we're gonna be doing this to the public. The public needs to know and see our employees doing their job. And so they need to have, they don't wanna see the employees just sitting around or go to a job and not have the tools or whatever.
I, I watch them.
So we have got to step up, I think, throughout the whole city and...
Well, I think...
Do a performance.
I think doing the projects, being able to do the projects correctly instead of the mandates or the patchwork is gonna help tremendously too, so, um...
You know, there's a, there's another local community in the area, they're on their last project, they spent the last twenty-five years completely rebuilding their system. Granted, they're a third of our size, but they've been able to decrease their operations and maintenance by changes significantly. They don't need as much staff because the lines have been replaced.
Right.
We're not having to cover all, I mean, well, like the last one, we worked in a better weekend. Uh, we start seven AM on, or eight AM on Saturday, we finish at ten o'clock that night, came back the next day, worked from seven to, seven to one-thirty. That's all of our time for five, six people.
Right.
And some of the, some of the mandates coming down from EPA, that's gonna come.
So in winter and the spring, we pretty much indefinitely will have something on Seventh Avenue before we would've replaced all of this. So it's just on the field.
So seven to go.
When we've replaced all that water line, uh, the grade issue, but I'm pretty sure Johnson's gonna love it that you're not tearing up a Jordan.
Twice a year.
So when we're doing these, in my mind, instead of putting the bandaid on it, really going through and trying to get some money to fix them, just like we did with the grade issue and water line project, the Seventh Avenue, now we move on to the next one.
Don't worry.
The water station.
Well, and that has been brought up, it's like people will say, well, why did they repair a street and then go and tear it up the next year? But now we're not gonna have to do that.
Well, I think the other thing is too, is that we need to work on our communication with the community, you know, show them like what the projects are, pictures, um...
Well, I think, Greg, Don, you know, it has many, yeah, but we just need to perform when we're working on the job.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. Um, we still discussing?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're still discussing?
Almost.
I don't even recall what, how we initially changed the, the water rates. Wasn't it in a sort of an emergency fashion or something to that effect?
No, we originally did the three readings.
We had three readings.
Okay. Okay, that's what it was. Um, I guess the rates themselves, all we would need is to have that drafted up, but, um, you still have to have the pre-readings if it was to go in as an ordinance.
We changed the ordinance the last time to allow changing it by resolution.
Okay. And that was for all, I think it was waters, the...
Yeah.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
We showed another way, Madam Mayor, if you're over here.
All of us, you know, we're paying the same bill.
Yeah.
Well, that state law, we have to bring in the same amount of money as we put out.
Well, I, I understand that, I know what's needed, I just worry about a certain percentage of our citizens on that fixed income.
Certainly we wait...
Madam Mayor, um, there is a, a way that we could possibly come up with our own program to try to help supplement people on fixed incomes, so...
Yeah.
It's something that we need to research and, uh, try to implement if that's, uh, what we wanna try to do with our community.
I do have a call into a community that does do that, I'm waiting on information from that community to take a look at it before it's taken consult.
That'd be something good to look at, so I'm looking forward to getting what you come up with, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, we do, I'm waiting for it.
Any questions on the reports?
Okay, um, moving on to Police Chief Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first item was the calls for service. Since October eighth of this year, Newcastle PD one hundred and seventy, Weston County Sheriff's Office one hundred and two, Upton Police Department eighteen, Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department ten, Weston County Fire Protection District two, and Upton Volunteer Fire Department one. I apparently spaced out the ambulance services because I did not write those down, so I apologize for that. I think we've pretty much covered everything else in the committee report, with the exception of one minor thing that came up very recently. In implementing our new records management system, it's called Flex, it's a Motorola product, uh, the GIS data that the city and county have compiled that needs to be implemented into that system is not quite up to snuff. They have to, uh, do some work on the intersections, uh, for whatever reason, in order to satisfy the requirements of the Flex system, and that's a four thousand dollar bill. Um, in discussing it with the sheriff today, uh, we decided we would try to submit that, I think I have room for that in my budget, I don't think it would require any type of budget amendment, I just wanted the council to be aware of that. Uh, not entirely sure which line item, I'll take it out of, but, uh, so it'd be a two thousand dollar bill to the city to get that, and it's, and it's kind of an exigent thing because the go-live for our system is in December, and if we don't get that done by the twelfth, November, it's gonna push that back even farther than it's already been pushed back, so we're trying to get things rolling down, rolling down the line here, so. Does anybody have any questions about that? And that is all I had outside of the, like I said, the committee reports.
Any questions, Chief? City Attorney Delaney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the only thing I have to report is, I have not found a J break ordinance that I particularly would ask yet. Um, that will be forthcoming as soon as I do find one, and I will send it to the chief because there are, uh, I don't completely understand about law enforcement's, basically what they can and can't do with certain vehicles, so they'll have to keep me informed as well. Um, the other thing I just want the council to be surprised is that, um, I should have proposed, some proposed amendments to the personnel policy, um, and I should have those out to the council probably by the end of the week or early of next week. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for the district?
I was gonna ask you if the disturbing the peace ordinance, or do we have a disturbing the peace rule here in the city? Can a J break be considered the person that's disturbing the peace?
I think that would be kind of a tough stretch, but one of the things specifically with the J break ordinances that have been put into place, there has been some success, I guess, in certain places. Frankly, I, I think some of them are a little, um, the ones that I believe see have been a little, um, you know, they don't really cover as much as... But in terms of disturbing the peace, no, I think the, I think you would have to have a specific thing for J breaks specifically on that.
When you're talking about policies, I did receive a phone call from Alan Thompson this week, or last week I should say. Uh, he's the president of WASCOP, and I know you were talking about the police departments' policies and procedures. Uh, they contracted with Daigle Group, actually out of Connecticut, Eric Daigle was a Connecticut state trooper for ten years, and then he became an attorney, and they do, his practices centered around law enforcement. Uh, and they came up with a model set of policies for the state of Wyoming, and as soon as those come out, I should have access to those, and I can get you those, and we can... And we can do what little modifications we need to fit the city of Newcastle. So that should lessen that workload by quite a bit and get our policies up to date.
That would be great.
Sounds good. I'm a feature.
Plans against the city dated October 21st, 2024.
Oh, your honor, I'm moved. We pay our bill.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Can I get a motion to leave the regular session and enter into executive session regarding that one new statute 16-4-405? A double I personnel. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Going into executive session at 7:49. Thank you, Walter. Thank you for coming.
Again, I respect him coming into the lion's den. Weston County is notoriously conservative. And JD came in and stood at the front of a room where he knew he was in the minority and took questions, which is better than I can say for others from, from that wing of the party. That's my, my problem. So, so, you know, Chip not getting a chance to respond, hey, true no fault of our own or no fault of the Freedom Caucus, because the Freedom Caucus shows up, they've kind of had the stage to themselves. But for JD Williams to do something that, that, sorry, that, you know, Ogden wouldn't do, you know, Liz Cheney wouldn't do, I mean, who he gets lumped in with. He came, he came right up and, and he saw people and he talked to people.